So my friend, you're running for city council.
County council.
County council.
I know.
Oh, my gosh.
We live in different counties. So in Salt Lake County.
We don't even have that here. We have three people.
Yep.
They make all the decisions.
They have both the executive and legislative powers in Utah County.
If only two of them agree, that's the way the county goes.
Yeah. So Amelia's kind of reigns supreme down here a little bit. Yes.
You've got Amelia and then you had one just resign, right? Tom, and then I don't even know who the other one is.
Well, and I've met Skylar, who's going to be the new commissioner to join the crew this year. So.
Is he the one running?
He's the Republican nominee, which we know in Utah County.
Yeah. Good luck.
I don't even know if there's a Democrat in that race, but.
I think there's a united Utah.
Okay.
Person.
Okay.
I think Alan Westman is running for that.
All right.
If I'm not mistaken.
You know, it's south of the point of the mountain and in Salt Lake County, we have a mayor council form of government. So the mayor's the executive branch, the nine member council is the legislative branch. I'm running for the open at large seat. So I'd have.
So you represent the whole county?
The entire county, all 1.2 million people.
That's cool.
Yeah, over a third of the state. So John Curtis, he's supporting me in my race. And we were chatting last week. He goes, wait, how many people are you going to represent? You know, 1.2 million. And he goes, that's bigger than a congressional district by a lot. So pretty big deal for a very local race. We'll say it that way.
How's it going? And why did you decide to do it?
I know. Cause I lost my mind. No, as I, as I watch you interview people, you always say, I, how do people enter the arena of politics? And for me, I got a phone call in November.
From who?
Well, I'll say from a senior Republican woman in the state of Utah. So she called me.
Deidra?
Not Deidra, but I did talk to her that day. I called basically every Republican woman in elected office I knew. Within 48 hours to say, this is what this person believes. What do you think? And, uh, you know, Deidra, to her credit, she said, well, Rochelle, sounds like a door's been opened. You don't have to close it immediately. Let it stay open for a week and see how it feels. And so me being a business executive, I had to write myself a job description. What does the county council member actually do? And an at-large county council member in that, because there's six district seats, three at-large seats, not to nerd out too much. And then because it's an open seat, you have all these names of people that were floating of potential candidates for this race. And then before I know it, it's 11:00 PM three days later and I'm pulling up the Salt Lake County budget and reading that at 11:00 PM in my bed. And then I realized, oh my gosh, Rochelle, you've drawn out of a job description. You've looked at the other candidates. You are the most qualified human that's in the mix here. So why would I not run? And then when you start thinking about it, well, one, it's going to impact the partnership at Rev Road Capital a little bit, right? Cause a county council position, you're talking 20 to 30 hours a week of work for six years. Right? Uh, so that, you know, I had to talk to my business partners about it. And then number two is fear of failure, fear of being attacked. Right?
Yeah.
And then, and then looking myself in the mirror and saying, are you really that afraid of failure that you wouldn't run for something when you know that you could do a great job for the people of Salt Lake County? And once I knew it was just fear of failure, I was all in.
That's awesome. What, what has it been like though? Like, did you, did you have to go through the process, like the convention or signature gathering? So did you?
Oh, yeah.
You went through the convention?
I went through.
What was that like?
So here's the thing is Nikki Haley actually won caucus night in Salt Lake County. So Salt Lake County convention and the county delegates, I had 1,500 county delegates. I won convention with 58% of the vote.
Oh, cool.
Against a candidate who was running to the right of me. But I held, I held 32 delegate events in less than a month. And I just said, all right, delegates, like here I am, ask me anything. I mean, I worked my tail off between caucus and convention, got 58% of the vote. I needed 60% to become the nominee. So then we went to a primary and then I won the primary with 58% of the vote. So I like to joke with Chris Knoll, who's our Republican Party Chair and Rob Axon at the county and state levels. Like I'm your dream Republican candidate this year because convention matched primary, like.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Interesting.
You know, but, uh, I am glad that I went through the convention process. The delegates really do do their due diligence on candidates and we would be in libraries and we would literally whiteboard things out. And they wanted to understand my electric vehicle related investing, right? So I got to talk about hypercraft. I got to talk about the future mobility. I got to talk about the grid and energy and things like that. And I, and, and when you have those long form dialogues, then you actually reach a place of respect and understanding and education and growth, both as a candidate and as a voter. And that's so rarely happens, but it happens in the convention phase of a race.
And that is the argument for caucuses and conventions, right? Like it's obviously fewer people than are mailing in ballots or going to the polls or all that type of stuff. But they're far more engaged and the argument is they're far more informed. I don't know if that second one is true, but, um, that's the argument. They're certainly more engaged. So if they're more engaged, they probably are more informed.
They definitely spend their time researching and, uh, you know, I mean, but, but I think in Salt Lake County and the county delegates, you had a lot of folks who are just, you know, Little League football coaches and school teachers who attended caucus night to vote for Nikki Haley. And then they're in their caucus room and it's like, oh, now we elect delegates. And they're looking around, they're saying, okay, well, I'll be a delegate. So there were a lot of first time delegates this year in Salt Lake County, which I think made the county convention kind of a special and unique experience compared to the whole state convention, which, you know, that's, that's out of, out of my race realm. So.
That's like still going, it seems like. I don't even.
Well.
That might never end.
You know, and I, and my message to Republicans is, yeah, the, yeah, that may never end. But the governor's race, regardless of who you decide to vote for in that race, cause that is the race that's still the one with all the drama from convention. Vote all the way down the ballot. Research all of the races that are on the ballot. And, and, and vote for conservatives and Republicans all the way down the ballot. Don't just focus on the presidential race and the governor's race and then skip everything else. So because, you know, I think Utah is a special place because we have very collaborative conservatives who serve in office. And, uh, and I'm, I'm excited to hopefully win this election in November and, and serve everyone in Salt Lake County.
So Salt Lake County is a blue county, is it not? This is why I don't know. This is what I don't know. I don't think, so, and I don't know that people, people obviously think Salt Lake City is, is blue. But the county I think is majority Republican on the council. Is that correct?
Yes. So Salt Lake County, we would call it purple because there is a Democrat county mayor and a Republican led county council. So five Republicans, four Democrats on the council, as is.
Why is the mayor always a Democrat though? The county mayor?
I think it's.
That's an interesting one.
Yeah. I think it's just something that the county has settled into. And you, you think about Pete, Pete, and then Ben, and now Jenny Wilson. They definitely present as moderate. Uh, they know how to work in bipartisan ways with a Republican led council. And you're right in that Salt Lake City is blue. There's only one Republican who lives in Salt Lake City who's in elected office. Do you know who that is?
Mitt Romney?
No, it's Blake Moore.
Oh, okay.
And so I live in Salt Lake City. I win this race. I doubled the number of Republicans in elected office who live in Salt Lake City.
That's huge.
But there are more Republicans who live in Salt Lake City than any other city in Salt Lake County. So even though Salt Lake City is a blue city, they're still, I like, we like to joke on our team that there are dozens of Republicans in Salt Lake City. There's actually like thousands of Republicans in Salt Lake City. So the Democrats would love to call Salt Lake County blue. It's purple. Obviously on the Republican side, we would love to make it a little bit more of a reddish toned purple.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what, what do you think Salt Lake County needs?
What does Salt Lake County need? Well, when you look at the skillsets of, and the professional experience of the nine members of the council, we have doctor, dentist, um, you know, people who've been involved in the arts and best friends, animal society. The council oversees the purse strings of what is now a nearly $2 billion annual budget. It's the second largest budget in the state of Utah, behind the state's budget.
What do they do with that?
And, and guess how many, uh, how many people from the world of finance and investing are on the council?
Zero.
Zero. So I've been, you know, given an opportunity in my career to manage billions of dollars in the private sector. And now I get to invest in primarily Utah based startups and software and electric vehicles. And so I know that I will bring value to the council by just bringing that skillset and lens of being an investor. And when program directors are pitching ideas to fund new programs, I will bring an investor's framework for, okay, what are the mechanisms involved to measure outcomes? And, you know, how do we evaluate progress over time? And make sure that taxpayers are getting a return on their hard earned money, that they are contributing to the county via primarily property taxes.
$2 billion is crazy.
Yeah. I mean, half of that is transportation and infrastructure money, right? So it's kind of a pass through and then, but there's a big general fund. And a lot of times people say, well, why does the county government even exist? And so you think.
Great question.
Well, here, let me answer it for you. I know, right? Um, no, that it really is a question I get asked all the time. So you have your local municipal governments. Uh, and so, you know, I live in Salt Lake City, right? So I have a Salt Lake City Council, a mayor and all of that. And I pay Salt Lake City taxes. Well, they, they collect my trash and sewage and, you know, things like that, right? The local police department. Uh, at the county level, it's like, what makes sense at a regional level? Okay. The county jail and public safety. There's a lot of power and consolidation there in a regional way. Uh, and so the, the jail and funding the jail and public safety, that's, that's honestly the, by far the largest budget item. County government. So I just spent two hours touring the county jail last week.
Really?
Yeah.
What's it like?
You know, it's not a pleasant place. It's. Yeah, yeah, I know. I joked with Chief Demond. I said, where's your marketing team? So, no, but I, I, he got a good laugh out of it too, but, it was built in the late nineties. The county has not added a single jail bed in 24 years. And it's, you know, concrete and cement. And they took me through the processing area, right? Where you're literally seeing police officers from around the county, um, bring individuals in. And, uh, you know, you've got the smells and the sights and, but I got to tour one of the pods. The county jail is actually the largest mental health facility in the state of Utah, the Salt Lake County Jail. And, uh, when the jail was built, all of the consultants thought that they had built out more than adequate mental health kind of beds inside of the jail and then capacity just filled up quickly. No one anticipated what would happen in mental health over these last two decades. So with the advent of technology and innovation, there are costs to society too. And, uh, and so I want to come in and, and really think through that of you have smartphones. And you also have an anxious generation tied to those smartphones.
You read that book?
Oh, yeah.
Jonathan Haidt's?
Yeah.
It's a great book.
It is a good book.
It's a scary book, actually. It's a little depressing, but.
Yeah. Well, and so Salt Lake County also has rec centers and libraries and, uh, Salt Lake County Council with the mayor. It was actually a mayor recommendation. Uh, they now have my free rec pass program for all kids in Salt Lake County. So any child in Salt Lake County can go use a rec center for free. And the idea is we gotta get kids playing in the real world and not being so connected to their smartphones. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah. The payoff on mental health and physical health, I think will be huge for the county. Right?
No, I like things like that. I mean, if you're going to have a county government and you're going to have $2 billion and there's nothing we can do about that now, um, do stuff like that with the money. Like give the kids rec passes. Why, why is their school lunch debt, right? Obviously I've been talking about this. You know, like pay all that off. Like you just, if you're going to use the money, like use it.
Well, and I'm glad to see what the governor's doing. Um, and I was, I was a reduced lunch kid growing up. And, uh, so I know what it's like to have, uh, that kind of stigma tied.
Oh, back then too, they would stamp your hand. Like it was, it was literally a letter like, and then they'd like, in front of everyone, they'd be like, all right, here you stamp, this guy cannot pay for lunch. Well, this guy has debt. Look at this kid, this loser kid.
It, yeah, we've definitely evolved to the better, right?
At least we're not stamping their hands.
Yeah. Yeah. And, uh, that's how Tyler Clancy and I actually built a collaborative friendship was we had met. I was serving on the board of the policy project at the time and he was telling me that he was wanting to run reduced lunch, kind of legislation at the state level and try to find a way to go, all right, kids are either free lunch program or they pay for lunch. This reduced lunch middle is a very awkward middle and it's most awkward for kids.
Oh, yeah.
Cause you know that you're getting, uh, government assistance. Once you kind of are old enough to realize like, wait a second. So, you know, you have that kind of shame going, but you still have to pay for lunch. So then when your balance goes to zero and then you're in negative, I remember that experience as a fourth grader and just dreading.
It's actually so wild the more I think about it. I probably have so much childhood trauma from it. Maybe that's why I freaked out.
Were you a reduced lunch kid too?
Oh, yeah. It was summer lunch kit.
Oh.
Yeah. Like that, that's the situation we were in.
Yeah.
So yeah, it was crazy.
Yeah.
It's wild, but I don't really understand, not to belabor on this point, but you're here and you know more about this stuff than I do. Why is there school lunch debt? Like, what does that mean? Like, if we're going to talk about budgets and school district budgets and county budgets and, you know, state budgets and city budgets and all this type of stuff. It's $2.8 million.
Right.
Why are we even putting our kids through this? You just said $2 billion budget for the county, you know, like. Why are we putting our kids through this?
Well, I don't want to speak out of turn because school lunch is a state issue. It's not a county issue, right?
It might even be a school district issue. I don't know why we never talk about that. Like they have money. We give them money.
The, usually the largest line item on your property tax bill is to your local school district.
Yeah. I'm not even sure that it's a state. No, the weirdest part about this, I've been fully focused on this now for how long? Like a month, month and a half. I still don't know why it's a problem. I don't know who to blame. Not that I'm like looking for someone to blame. I actually just want to solve it. It's not like I want to call anybody out, but I actually, you can't even get to the root cause of why it's a problem.
Yeah. Well, and I think there's a reluctance, um, from lawmakers to fund a program where when you see it in other states, the budget can grow quite significantly and you end up with a lot of food waste too, right? And so it's a marketplace where I think no state has really figured it out well.
Yeah. It's an interesting challenge because the thing that I kept bumping into was like, hey, if you pay off lunch for Ella kids and other kids and parents are going to take advantage of that. And they're going to, you know, just like, oh, Silicon Subs has a fund, they'll, they'll pay it. Don't worry about it. And my response to it was always like, so what?
Yeah.
But I guess I do kind of see it. Whereas like, you know, if you, but I don't know. Like that's my, the least of my concerns.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and this is what I've been experiencing, getting to know families across the county. I actually was in a backyard at a West Valley City meet and greet recently, Saturday night. There were probably.
What a way to spend your Saturday. What are you doing?
Welcome to my 2024. I know, I know. I, I, yes, I.
No, it's incredible.
You know what? I am happier and healthier and more grounded today than I was before I got that phone call in November.
That's beautiful.
And that has been a pleasant surprise because of course there's this fear of entering the political arena. And yes, I am the most featured, uh, Utah based candidate on the Utah Democrat party's social media accounts. In either party, right? They, they love to talk about me. They love to make memes about me. Um, and, and I see it and I just kind of go, well, that's not actually reality. So who cares? Like my reality and, and you brought up Jeff Bezos before we started rolling, but, you know, leadership principle, number one at Amazon, uh, customer obsession. We're mindful of competitors, but we are focused on our customers. And when we focus on customers, success follows. I have been purely focused on my customers and my customers are 1.2 million people in Salt Lake County. They are not my opponents. I, I'm not running to be the queen of Utah Twitter.
Yeah.
Right? No, I, I mean.
Who would you even be dethroning? I don't even know.
Who would I be? I don't, Michelle Quist has a good following on Twitter, you know?
She's been in here.
Yeah.
She's running for something.
She's running for attorney general. Yeah. Yeah. Against Derek Brown. So. So I have my yard sign and yards with Derek Brown sign. I have my yard sign and yards with Michelle Quist signs. So that's where, that's been another surprise on the campaign trail is that, um, I've, you know, pitched myself as a candidate for my specific job to voters. And just because you went over one voter, it means you've, you've won over one voter. And they might choose candidates that I would choose to vote for other candidates.
By the way, you should do that, right? Like it shouldn't just be.
Yeah.
All one box, all one party. That doesn't make any sense.
No, do your due diligence and Salt Lake County voters are known for doing that. There's, it's kind of a one third Republican, one third Democrat, one third that is the movable middle.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Where are the Republican strongholds in Salt Lake County?
Oh, the, the southwest quadrant. No, uh, Harriman, Riverton, Bluffdale, South Jordan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the close ones to Utah County.
Yeah. Burgess's district, right? Trent Stags is the mayor of Riverton. They, they pride themselves on, on being Republican strongholds. And, and I have spent a lot of time in Riverton and Harriman and Bluffdale and South Jordan. I love the southwest quadrant. Living in Salt Lake City, it's not like, oh yeah, you know, where I want to drive to is Harriman this afternoon. But, um, Harriman has a huge Polynesian community, has a huge Venezuelan community. It's actually one of the most diverse cities. Yeah.
Rugby team plays out there.
Yeah.
And that is the coolest thing. Yeah. Harriman's got all those places I can even believe exist. And then you go there and it's like, oh, these, this is bigger than Utah. Like it's crazy how big those places are.
Yeah. I believe if you combine the cities of Harriman, Riverton, Bluffdale, South Jordan, they are a bigger population than Salt Lake City.
Yeah, I would believe that.
And it's also where the future growth of Salt Lake County is going to be over the next 20 years. When we think about the need to build more housing, it's a lot of that's going to come in that part of the county.
Let me ask you this, because I do want to get to like Rev Road stuff and.
Yeah.
Those types of things. But when I'm on Twitter, it feels like we're on the verge of civil war, right? It's just like, what is going on? Like, how are they talking to each other like this? And what are you, you said, what? Like, and it's crazy, right? And then I go out into the actual world. And no one, and I mean this sincerely, no one talks like that. I've never met anybody who talks like that.
Well, you should run for office because then you'll run into a few people who talk like that to you.
Yeah. But what I'm asking you is, is, um, the camp is campaigning and what you've learned from campaigning, go to door to door, all these types of things. Are we as divided as we're portrayed in not just social media, but media intentionally, right? Like they intentionally divide, like both these things. Are we that divided? Like, are you feeling that? Obviously you're feeling some of it.
So that's, that's a tough question to answer. Because I have some events and meetings where it definitely feels very us versus them is the voter group that I'm talking to. And then I'll have other, uh, meetings with voters where it's feels very inclusive. Everyone has a, has a place in this neighborhood. And that's one thing, like I've been really impressed. I, I went around to a bunch of block parties in Midvale. And Midvale has a very like come as you are kind of vibe. Uh, Magna has a lot of kids.
Yeah.
And that's out on the Northwest flank of the county, right? And Salt Lake City, uh, is a place where if you jumped onto Twitter, you might think that there's actual warfare happening inside of Salt Lake City. And then, um, but I, I have lots of friends of various political persuasions in Salt Lake. And, and I love being in a place where we can talk about policy and issues and what's going on with homelessness and public safety and downtown and all of these things. And it's done in a respectful way. Like Utah, the beehive is for real.
Yeah.
But Twitter is this just crazy place.
It's like, it's a war zone. There's, uh, you know, you can't even walk around there. You know, you obviously had an extreme example of that is San Francisco. And I remember I was seeing like all these videos of like San Francisco has gone, it's like a war zone. You can't even walk outside without getting stabbed or something. And then randomly I find myself in San Francisco. I'm like, I mean, yeah.
And you felt totally fine.
Saying, but also like.
Yeah.
It's not that bad.
Yeah, no, but I, I look at Salt Lake, I look at Salt Lake County and Utah. And I really do care deeply about Utah preserving its beehive vibes and sense of the community, public sector, private sector, nonprofits collaborating with each other. That's what I think is the strength of the beehive is that it's the different sectors in Utah really do work in collaborative ways. And when you look at other places, metropolitan areas that are more mature on the west side of the United States, like, I'm not interested in becoming the next Portland or the next Denver or, no, like I want Salt Lake to continue to be its sort of unique flavor. And, and that's what really energizes me.
I don't like Denver.
No.
Everyone's talking about Denver. Portland is beautiful, but yeah, I would never. But Denver is like who we're compared to all the time. I don't, I don't like Denver.
Well, you fly into Denver and I worked for JP Morgan for a few years. And so we were very attached to the Denver office. So I'd fly out there and the mountains are like.
So far.
An hour away, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Salt Lake City is what Denver was what people think Denver is.
Well, and I love meeting people who are transplants to Utah and they say, yeah, well, we checked out Denver. And then someone said, oh, you should check out Boise and Salt Lake City, you know, and Salt Lake City won, right? I love that.
Yeah. Plus you gotta be a Broncos fan. There's all sorts of reasons not to.
But what kind of NFL fan do we have to be in? I still haven't quite figured that out.
Whoever we want.
Yeah.
It's the best.
There's a lot of pressure on Raider Nation. There's some legacy on the Broncos. Well, and I grew up watching Steve Young play.
So you got the 49ers.
Yeah.
I think a lot of 49ers fanner because of Steve Young. You'll find a lot of them in Utah.
Yeah. You'll, you'll see, uh, 49ers, you know, they're, they're going to be like, what happened to our Utah stronghold? Like 50 years from now, when we're all dead, you know, all, all of these millennials who grew up watching Steve Young play.
Should have drafted Zach Wilson.
They could have. They could have. Is he, how is he doing?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how he's doing. I couldn't even tell you actually where he's playing.
Oh yeah. But just because watch my ADHD in action, but I'm in the backyard in West Valley City and meeting with all of these individuals who live in this community. Most of them have lived in the neighborhood for at least 20 years. Like these are, and we're talking, uh, center left Democrats, unaffiliated voters, Republican voters, right? And they're all together in the backyard. We're eating hot dogs. And, uh, I, I talked about how I used to resent my childhood, that money was tight. And that we had to figure out ways to sell candy and gum and, and things like that, just to buy basketball shoes. But, um, I am so proud of my upbringing now. And that's been a pleasant surprise from running for office is realizing like, wow, each of us has a story to tell. Each of us is the sum of our experiences and it's all about our perspective and, and learning from our lived experiences to then build community.
Yeah. Well, best of luck there.
Well, thank you.
I really am impressed with anybody who does that. And I think it's really remarkable and it takes courage to even put yourself out there, particularly in this environment. I mean, you're getting tweeted about every day. That'd be so crazy. That'd be wild. That doesn't even make any sense. That's so weird.
Yeah. The first time it happened was sort of like, whoa, what's going on? I can't believe that's my name, right? And then you sort of like learn how to disassociate and a campaign's very much like a startup. You gotta go zero to one. You build a team together. You want to have all these perfect processes and systems and mechanisms. But, you know, you just gotta get to the next day and the next day. And you have the business plan that you're sort of, that you are executing on. Not sort of, we are actually doing a really good job. And I think part of that is because I operate in the world of startups. So I understand like that mentality.
Very entrepreneurial, actually.
Yeah.
It's what you already know about.
It is. And the candidate is the product of a campaign. So I'm the CEO of the campaign and I'm in the product. So I feel like my job as CEO is to manage the product. So like, I gotta put myself to bed on time every night. I gotta work out. I gotta eat healthy. So like, I gotta put myself to bed on time every night. I gotta work out. I gotta eat healthy. Yeah.
Yeah. You gotta sustain it. It's a marathon.
Yeah.
I didn't even think about that. Um, let's talk about Rev Road.
Let's.
So there's two aspects of Rev Road, as I understand it, you tell me if I'm wrong, and maybe, maybe there's another one. You've got the accelerator.
Correct.
Piece of it. And then you've got a fund and the fund is relatively new, two, three, four years, something like that.
We launched the fund July 2022. That's when I, so I'm a co-founder, managing director of Rev Road Capital.
You came in? And what does Rev Road, what is Rev Road's capital relationship with the incubator or accelerator?
Yeah. We call ourselves sister companies. So our investment committee and investor base and ownership and everything, they're, they're two different companies from each other, right? And, and so if a company is a Rev Road portfolio company, it does not necessarily mean it's a Rev Road Capital portfolio company, but it is a very strategic relationship. Most of the investments we've made from our seed stage fund at Rev Road Capital, which it's a traditional seed stage fund, we raised $61 million in Fund One when venture capital fundraising was down 74% year over year nationally. And let me tell you what, I gained 20 pounds raising that fund.
That's wild. Yeah.
Then I lost it all and then got a phone call to run for office. But thank goodness I lost that weight.
That's so funny.
I really, I, I gained that 20 pounds raising that fund. You know, just how are we going to attract LPs and, oh yeah.
Stressful.
And you get the verbal of, yeah, we'll, we'll commit a million dollars. And some people sign the docs immediately and others, I mean, it is, it is like the day of the close. You know, that docu-sign document comes in and I, I balled like a baby that night at midnight when all the documents came in and we had officially closed and hit 61 million. We were, our goal was 60. So, you know, but we had some, there's just so many balls in the air. And, and then everyone who signed on that last day, we're like, okay, we overshot by a million. Great. We have an extra million to allocate now. But we've invested now in seven companies out of the fund. We'll write one to $3 million initial checks. We just invested in a Utah-based startup that is not a part of Rev Road's accelerator. So we will, we will invest in, in startups that do not go through the accelerator program, but most of our investments have been into companies that we already have a relationship with.
Makes sense. If you're seeing them every day and seeing how they progress.
Yeah.
And you kind of have the inside look and, and actually an insider's advantage, why wouldn't you do that? I want to talk to you about Hypercraft. I'm super excited about Hypercraft. What an incredible investment that was. Well done.
Well, you know, knock on wood, right?
Company.
Yeah.
I don't like, yeah. And by the way, I don't know that another fund invests in that, another Utah fund invests in that.
We try, we tried to recruit some of our friends to, to-
Oh, what a mess. What a mess.
We did get some individual angels in Utah to invest alongside us. And so that's always fun to see those folks in the community because they're just like Hypercraft, you know? And yeah, Hypercraft's in the middle of a negotiation that, you know, not, that's why, knock on wood, because it could be a massive, massive win for the state of Utah, for the future of mobility, period.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so we'll see, we'll see how that turns out.
Incredible. Their CEO was just where you are now, maybe a week or two ago. Super smart.
Oh yeah. You just interviewed Jake?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like unbelie, like I could listen to him for hours on like how he does that. Like, oh man, I think, not to rub it in, but I think every VC fund that passed on that is going to regret it and regret it quite quick.
I think so too. Yeah. Yeah. Well, good. Then I'm glad everyone will have heard Jake's story and the story of Hypercraft. And you know, there's a lot of great startups coming out of, of Rev Road, but I think Hypercraft could be the company where it's like, and Darren Hill had a vision for Rev Road and Hypercraft happened because of Rev Road.
Yeah.
Right? Jake needed to have some sort of infrastructure around him to have the courage
Oh, yeah.
to launch Hypercraft. And what a rocket ship that's been. It's, I, I'm just always so blown away by his humility and his intelligence and his grit. He's, he's a remarkable founder.
He's a very special founder and entrepreneur. I was blown away by him. This is the first time I met him was when he came in here. I was blown away by him.
Oh, well, I'm-
It's really cool.
Where did I first meet him? I might've first met him at Rev Road's original office. And then I drove over to the mall where they were building Hypercraft in like an old Foot Locker.
The Provo Mall?
Yeah. Provo Town Center.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. So you like literally walk through the mall entrance.
That place is crazy right now. It's a ghost town.
And, and then there's Hypercraft, like taking up really what is now cheap real estate. And so now they're in the Sears of Provo Town Center Mall.
I don't know if I knew that.
Yeah. So when they moved in, you know, we saw mannequins.
That's cool.
Yeah. The escalator doesn't work, right?
Hasn't worked for years.
No, no.
Sometimes I'll go to a movie there because they still got that Cinemark and I'm like, what is going on? Like when I was a kid, it was like the most popular place ever. And like this, yeah.
Yeah. Well, next time you can just swing over to Hypercraft, ask Jake like, hey, show me a couple of the projects you're working on. I mean, they're, they're working with defense contractors. They're working with boat manufacturers. And, and to anyone who hasn't watched the episode with Jake, Hypercraft is, you know, really attempting to be the intel for electric vehicles, right? Like what it, instead of Cummins engines on a combustion vehicle, we need to have an electric vehicle powertrain system manufacturer that doesn't, is agnostic to the type of vehicle that it is, that's running, right?
It's open source Tesla. That's probably the best way I would say it.
Yeah.
It's open source Tesla. And so just imagine, I mean, a lot of things have to go right, right? And Elon is a very special person and nobody will rebuild that again. But it's open source Tesla and that is just a huge, huge, huge opportunity.
It's a massive, massive market, right? And there's plenty of demand for it. And they're even working with some local governments in California that have a mandate to electrify their fleets where it is, the state of California has mandated this. And if they just wait, if, if this municipality waits for Ford Motorcar, you know, to manufacture enough electric trucks, like they're going to be waiting far past the deadline on the mandate. And so Hypercraft's even working with like local municipal governments on how do we convert your fleets?
That's so cool.
Yeah.
What do you think the state of venture funding is in Utah now?
That's a, that's a good question. You obviously have the players who built the ecosystem. And so grateful for Jim Dreyfus, right?
We don't, we don't talk about him enough. He's a legend.
Yeah. Jim is a good friend and mentor and he, we live about 15 minutes from each other. And you know, he, he believes in, in me, right? As a, as a future leader, and that means a lot, but he'll tell me stories from the nineties and you're just like, whoa. Right? And obviously with Pelion and Carrie Barker, who you had on recently, what a legend.
She really is a legend. She's, again, somebody we don't talk about enough. Like that episode, I loved that episode. I love talking to her.
Yeah.
It's just brilliant.
She's brilliant. And it was a short episode because she's so smart that she was like, here's the answer. If you're growing at 10 to 20%, not interested.
I know. It's like pretty like, she has pretty fundamental principles.
Next question.
She's the best.
No, him and in high, uh, obviously Gavin and Kickstart, right? And so I think, and then Album, you know, has had a lot of success. And, and their performance has, has really demonstrated like, well, you can be a small team, seed stage venture fund in Utah and have top quartile performance from Fund One.
Their Fund One is hard to beat. Hard to beat Fund One.
You know, we're, we're working on it, you know, why not?
That's a crazy Fund One.
Hypercraft to the moon and, and we'll see how our Fund One's performance is at the end of 10 years, right? So that's the thing is, and I remember deciding to go into venture and I was talking to a friend who's already in the industry. And she goes, the crazy thing is, is you really don't know how good you are at this for like a decade.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
That's very true.
So venture and public service are very similar to each other because you, like, I will be working on deals inside of the county that, uh, we won't know for probably 10 to 20 years, the payoff on it.
That's wild.
Economic development is a slow-moving machine that you have to think very long into the future. And the same thing with venture. Like it's really, you know, I've got a lot of friends who are in the middle of their first funds. I think there were a lot of us that launched funds, what, kind of coming out of the pandemic in Utah. And you know, there were several veterans of the industry who said, yes, we actually need more seed stage funds because Pelion's kind of gone, you know, downstream to the series A. And how are we going to fill up that gap that's being left behind on, on the seed stage? So I think Rev Road Capital, you know, I'm, I'm excited. And I think with our model, with Rev Road and being an accelerator venture fund sister company kind of network, that we will be an attractive thing to startups all over the country who will choose to build it in Utah, just like Hypercraft made that decision.
Yeah. Seed funds are so cool because you're writing like, what, one to three, something like that?
Yeah. I mean, some seed stage funds do smaller checks, right?
500, maybe even 250.
Yeah.
That's so fun. And then you have Pelion coming out today. So we invested $55 million in one company.
Strider. Yeah.
In Strider.
Yeah.
And you're like, oh, that's a seed fund. That's a legitimate seed fund.
Yeah.
That you just put into one company.
Basically my whole fund.
You just put into one company. That's wild.
Way to go Blake. Yeah.
Strider's a cool company though. That's going to be a monster too.
Yeah. So I think what's important is, and you know, I love the platform that you've built with Silicon Slopes because you're, you're kind of like the government for our venture community. You, because what is the power of government besides, you know, public safety? Maybe you make sure that we all play nice in the sandbox ultimately and give all of us a chance to talk and share our message and things like that, right? So we'll, we'll even give you a little bit of public safety inside of the VC community, but you all-
Start carrying a gun.
You got a badge, you know? Hey, you're in violation of code, blah, blah, blah. But you convene.
Yeah.
Right? And you bring people together. And that's, that's honestly like the biggest intangible that the government does too, is it has convening power to get people together, sharing ideas, you know, making sure we're all moving in the right direction.
It has such extreme, like we have convening power sure. And it is like one of the benefits and maybe one of the better things about what Silicon Slopes does for the community. So I absolutely agree with you. I don't want to like dismiss the compliment. But the government has, like you kind of have to go, right? And this is the thing I'll never understand with like, um, people who get into office and they don't use that. Well, you can have meetings that would take months or years for anybody else to even get, figure out. And you can get them all right now. Like today for lunch. Like why are you not always doing that?
Well, I think-
Or maybe they are and I don't know.
Well, you know, maybe they're playing on Twitter.
Yeah.
Right? And, and that's why I, I wanted to share my message because I think that there'll be people who watch this episode who say, okay, maybe it's actually not that scary to run for office. We need good, skilled, collaborative, charismatic humans running for office in our state to build our state over the next 30 years.
Yeah. I agree with you. I do think we need to think thoughtfully about who, because we come, another thing, like we're always complaining about who's running, who our choices are, who's this, who's that? And then it's like, well, you're not going to do it and I'm not going to do it. So like, if we're not going to do it, somebody else is.
Right.
And that's what you get.
Yeah.
Is the people who decide to do it.
Yeah.
It's not like you're choosing from all of us. You're choosing from the people who decide to do it. It's kind of wild.
It is kind of wild. Um, yeah. It's been a surreal year, but it's been a lot of fun too.
Well, congrats and best of luck on the campaign. Um, you'll know here, you know, what do you got, month and a half left?
Yeah, almost two months, 50-ish days. I mean, by the time this episode comes out, ballots will probably be hitting mailboxes or have just hit mailboxes mid-October. So I just got to encourage everyone, regardless of where you live, to vote.
Yeah.
It, I just ran into a man last night. I was walking to a candidate meet and greet in the Pepperwood neighborhood in Sandy. And I, you know, do my, hi, I'm Rochelle Morris. I'm running for county council and it's nice to meet you. My name will be on your ballot this November and you know, would love to answer any questions or talk about some of the county issues. And he goes, you know what? I gave up on voting a few years ago and I just am not into anymore.
That's cool.
Okay. I, I like looked at him so incredulously and I was like, I was like, you do realize that you are ceding your power as a constituent of the state of Utah inside of the United States of America to someone else? Because you're like, ugh, I'm just, this is just too much. Well, guess what? There are people who've decided this is what they're all about.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so, um-
I love the bravery and courage that he had to say that to you. I would have just been like, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Even if I am, well, yeah, this is great. I'm definitely pumped for you. Like, yeah, perfect.
Yeah. Where's the swag?
This guy is like, no, I'm not going to do that.
He's like, I'm over voting.
It's like later.
Yeah.
You got better things to do.
No, but he, he had a teenage son with him, right? And that is one thing, we actually have several University of Utah students volunteering on my campaign, which excites me to know that Gen Z looks at me and says, yeah, we want to help her. We'll go knock doors for her across Salt Lake County and try to be very approachable to the younger generation. And, and they just talk about, like, some of them became adults during COVID. And you know, like they were teenagers with the 2016 election, right? And then 2020 COVID and now this is 2024, right? And they're already feeling disenfranchised with voting. And it's like, no, we actually, we need Gen Z to, to be energized.
In particular in local elections.
In particular, yes.
Like, oh, I don't want to vote for these two candidates. It doesn't matter to you. It will likely not matter to you at all. Like what's going to matter to you is who we elect locally.
Yeah.
Right? That matters to such a big deal.
And come on, Gen Z.
Don't give up that vote.
Don't you want to vote for a woman who is familiar with blockchain technology? And is thinking about, how could we incorporate blockchain into some of the functions that are happening inside of Salt Lake County or other efficiencies, artificial intelligence? Like, come on, young folks, like, don't, don't you want to have people in elected office who are familiar with technology and want to make this place work better for you? Like that's, well, and that's why they're volunteering with me, right?
Well, I can't think of a better way to end it than that. Thank you so much for coming.
Everyone vote. Thank you, Clint.
Go to vote.com. Where do you actually go?
Well, for my website, it's voterochellmorris.com. So if you live in Salt Lake County, which is the best county in Utah.
It's not, but we can, we can agree to disagree.
And, and to, if you go to vote.utah.gov, that's where you can check your voter registration.
Vote.utah.gov.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Good to see you, my friend.
Okay. Good to be here.